Okay, can everyone stand for the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President Daley?
Here.
Vice President Hammond?
Here.
Trustee Clements?
Here.
Trustee Parr?
Here.
And trustee Schwartz?
Here.
Okay, so, thanks everybody for being here. It's great to see so many faces. This may come as a surprise to you, but our board meetings are not usually super well-attended. So, it's great to see people here. Before we get to why everybody's here, I just want to thank Dr. Tony Shoah. There was a meet and greet for him tonight. He's our new student support specialist. Is that the correct title? Student support specialist? And we had a great turnout of parents that were here to meet him, and it's just really exciting to have him as part of our team. I think he's going to be a great addition and somebody who can really start taking what we talk about, right? Differentiated learning, treating every kid as an individual, and really putting it into practice. So, welcoming him, and thank you to all the parents who took the time to meet him. And I'd like to turn it over. I think our principals are going to be introducing the staff. Is that true? Or are you going to do that?
Well, I'm going to be introducing the principals.
Okay, good. So, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Bowers, who is going to introduce our principals.
And Tony is still upstairs with probably, I would say, 20 to 25 parents that are were busily asking questions. So, when he's finished, he'll come down. But for right now, I'm going to introduce our new high school principal. And Mr. Peter Carrucci has joined us at the beginning of July. We're very happy to have him here. He came to us after being an assistant principal at both the middle and the high school level at Tuckahoe. He roots for Haldane, however. And he has every sense he knew got the job, so that's a good thing. So, Peter is going to introduce some of our new high school faculty, and I think you're also going to introduce the Haldane Academy teachers. Okay, so, Peter?
All right. First of all, we'd like to continue to recognize our two teachers who received tenure, Melissa Seidman and Christian Hoolen, who are not here. But we want to recognize that, and we're very grateful for them. We also have Ms. Kristin Moscow, who currently is engaged in the college financial aid evening right now, who will also be joining us later, I hope. She has already hit the ground running and is doing a phenomenal job. We also wish to recognize Mr. Christopher Saboso, who's here. Come on, stand up. That's okay. Christopher is actually the leave replacement currently for, oh, is that?
There we go.
For Melissa Seidman, and he's been taking on the AP coursework, and been, you know, it's been going very, very well. Thank you, Christopher. We'd also like to acknowledge Gabe Horn. Come on down. Gabe is not only a master teacher and taught for many years in another district, he also had formal experience as a geologist and a scientist, and brings to our Haldane Academy something very special, that personal touch and a professional background. So, we want to give him a warm round of applause, and thank you, Gabe, for joining us. Okay, we also would like to acknowledge Dawn Rosano, who is our Point Five School psychologist. Come on down. Dawn? Thank you for joining us. Oh, thank you as well. And she's been part of Tony's team and has already been fitting in quite well and meeting the needs of our students. We'd also like to acknowledge, let me just see, those who are not with us here tonight, Meg Lyons, who is a teacher aide in the high school. We'd like to also acknowledge, we'd also like to acknowledge Alexis Smith, who has become our aide full-on in the academy as well. Also, John Moranti, who's also our aide in the academy. And Patricia O'Rourke, who is not here as well, but has been spearheading a lot of our efforts in the Haldane Academy as well. So, we'd like to give everyone a warm, very phenomenal round of applause.
Thank you, Peter. And now, we'll introduce Julia Sniffin, our middle school principal. This is the beginning of her second year, and we're thrilled to have her.
Not that tall, but I guess I don't have that musical background. I can make that look easy. I'm just going to let it go. I would just, at this time, I'm going to introduce Melissa Ferbrotto, who is not here. But I just want to give her a warm welcome. She has replaced Danielle Cornacio as our choral teacher here. She teaches in all three buildings, and the level of energy, enthusiasm, and excitement that she has brought is really great to see in the students. Kids coming down saying, "Can I join chorus?", which is really nice to see. So, welcome to Melissa. She has a background in composition, in writing of music, in addition to a master's in instructional teaching of music. So, welcome, Melissa.
And Mr. Brent Harrington, our elementary principal, will be introducing a number of people.
Okay. Well, I'm going to step out of character for a moment and boast and say that I'm really proud of myself for hiring these people, because I'm, we're incredibly impressed with their qualifications and joining us here at Haldane. So, I'm quite, quite proud of that. Let me start with introducing Ms. Carolyn Llewellyn. Ms. Llewellyn is joining us as our new TA to oversee our elementary...
Brent, you need the microphone?
Move it up. Okay. To oversee our elementary and our garden program. So, Ms. Llewellyn comes to us as a Carnegie Mellon graduate, a graduate of the Peace Corps with extensive experience in horticulture and gardening, and we are just delighted to have her help to continue to support our elementary library program and move forward our garden program with our students. So, again, a warm welcome, Carolyn.
You have to come down and get your flower.
Okay. I'm pleased to also, again, welcome Ms. Lisa Needleman. Ms. Needleman comes to us from Bedford Central School District. So, unfortunately for Bedford, with the number of challenges that they had last school year with fiscal crisis was our gain here at Haldane, and we were able to secure Ms. Lisa Needleman, who's working in the area of special education, in the co-taught model in first grade and in fourth grade. So, we're delighted to have her. Ms. Needleman comes to us with a graduate degree from NYU and is a proficient Spanish speaker, another excellent hire, and a big warm welcome. So, Ms. Needleman. Ms. Spooner, our new fifth-grade teacher. Ms. Spooner comes to us as a tenured, formerly tenured, New York City high school teacher, algebra and geometry. Ms. Spooner is also an attorney, a former attorney. So, a huge welcome. She, her husband, I understand, is also a Haldane alum and resides here in Cold Spring as well. So, we're delighted to welcome Ms. Spooner to our elementary school as well. Warm welcome. So, we had quite a summer of hiring, of course, a number of other individuals who are not with us this evening. Mr. Dan McGrory, who is our new part-time general music teacher. Dan comes to us with extensive experience with the guitar and other string instruments. He's a graduate of Teachers College. I was just in his class earlier today, and I have to say, along the lines of what Julia shared with respect to Ms. Ferbota, the energy and excitement that I'm seeing in general music is quite nice. So, again, a warm welcome to Dan. Okay, thank you.
To me, Ms. Janjulus.
Ms. Janjulus?
Yes.
Is our new attendance aide. So, we're delighted to welcome Ms. Janjulus. She's our friendly greeter and responsible for attendance, K-8. Ms. Janjulus is also a Binghamton University graduate, along with our high school principal, Mr. Carrucci. So, is it Go Binghamton Rams? Bears? Bears.
It's one.
Bearcats?
I was there with colonials.
Colonials to the Bearcats, okay. I did not know that. So, a warm welcome to Janine. And of course...
The list keeps going.
It keeps going, yes. I had Julia here to remind me. Yes, Ms. O'Hara, Catherine O'Hara, has really just been a godsend in the transition as our new K-12 nurse. So, that's certainly a lofty position, you know, requires, of course, overseeing the medical needs and attention and care of almost 1,000 students here in the district. And Ms. O'Hara has transitioned beautifully, and we're just delighted to have her. And Ms. O'Hara is also a parent of four children who attend Haldane as well. So, a warm welcome to Catherine.
And I have two substitute teachers to note. Amy Sylvester, did we say her? And Erin DiMartino.
Yes, so Erin DiMartino is serving as Ms. Hawker's leave replacement for the next three months. In first grade, she's doing a wonderful job. Ms. DiMartino had previously been a tenured teacher in Malverna before taking some extended time off to raise her three daughters. So, we're delighted to have her with us for the next three months. Am I missing anyone else?
Christine DeRosa.
And Ms. Christine DeRosa, of course, is our new five-hour aide, along with Mr. Calvin Dino. They're serving as five-hour aides to help with the supervision and support of students in fourth grade and in kindergarten.
I have one more.
We also want to acknowledge Ms. Amy Sylvester, who's also leave replacement from Miss Grunisi currently, who is teaching geometry and other math topics. That's about it.
I think that's everybody.
It's been a busy summer.
It's been a busy summer. And it's so nice, I think, for all of us. I mean, the board gets to see these people's resumes, you know, and we say, "Oh, they look great." And they say, the principals say, "Oh, they're amazing." And we say, "Great." But we don't get to meet you guys in person that often. So, for me, it's great to meet you, to put faces and names together. So, thanks for coming tonight and being here. And we also just want to thank our principals and our administrators for all of that work. It takes a lot of work and time and effort to hire people. So, thanks for the work. And I think now we're moving on to our other amazing people, our PTA, Haldane School Foundation Arts Booster Club, and Blue Devils Booster Club, some of whom are here, some are not. So, I think I have a list of everybody, so we'll see how I do here. So, the PTA president is Julissa Rincon Tomizawa, who is here. I just want to acknowledge her and her work. Being the PTA president is, it's a big job. So, thank you for all that you do. And I'm just going to, I don't know if any of the other PTA people are here. Okay, I'm going to say them, and you just tell me if I've missed somebody, Julissa. But Lourdes Leifer is the current PTA vice president for the high school and the former PTA president, so thank you to her. Jessica Rosman is the PTA vice president for the middle school. And Eileen Dennehy is the PTA vice president for the elementary school. Alexandra Dubroff, PTA corresponding secretary. Maureen O'Brien Stathos, PTA treasurer. Till de Lafarge, PTA recording secretary. An amazing group of women. Thank you for everything that they do. Okay, Haldane School Foundation, we have the one, the only president, Ms. Shannon Keegan here. Thank you for everything that you do and all your support for our students.
Our Fall Ball coming.
Do it. Come to the microphone, Shannon. Come to the microphone. Say it loud and proud. Do it. No, but the people on the TV can't hear you.
Just a shout-out for our Fall fundraiser, which is coming up on October 14th at Pamela's Bird and Bottle Inn. It's going to be a great time. The theme is 1920s. Dress up if you want to, don't dress up if you don't want to. It's our biggest fundraiser of the year, so we're really encouraging everybody to attend. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. A thank you to John Hedlund, the vice president of the Haldane School Foundation. Cecily Hall is the secretary for the Haldane Foundation, and Roman Danilov is the treasurer for the School Foundation. So, thank you to all of those people who, and there's a whole slew of board members that contribute as well at the Haldane School Foundation. Thank you to all of them. Okay, more amazing people, the Arts Booster Club. So, the former president is Katie Bissinger. She really transformed how the Arts Booster Club rolls in this district, and she's done an amazing job. And a thank you to her. And I think the Arts Booster Club is finding its new, its new way without her. So, a thank you to Cory Reister. I don't know everybody's titles. I think she's working with the music branch. So, thank you to Cory Reister. Jennifer Sandlund, I think she's working in the drama branch. Laura Danilov, also the drama branch. Dani LaCastro, the visual arts branch. Pam Gunther, the visual arts branch. I think that's everybody.
And I also have to say that as of the last meeting we had, we now have up on the top a drop-down next to athletic that says arts. And so, that was something that they've asked for, and it's there, and now it's time to populate it, but we wanted equal billing, so that's exactly what they got.
Very good. Okay, and then the Blue Devil Booster Club. Let's see, we have a new president, Dawn Skanga. Thank you to Dawn for stepping up in that role. And a new secretary, or actually, I don't know if it's new, but a secretary, Catherine Platt. And that's the only leadership that I have listed for those, for the Blue Devils Booster Club. I don't know if other people are coming in.
You have a new treasurer.
Oh, yeah, and who's that?
Kristen Van...
Kristen Van Tassel.
Kristen Van Tassel. So, a big thank you to all of those people who run the Blue Devils Booster Club. Thank you to all of our parents. The Haldane School Foundation, the PTA, the Arts Booster Club, and the Blue Devils Booster Club really keep our school humming along. So, thank you to everybody for all that you do. One more round of applause. I think now there are some refreshments.
Refreshments next door. So, if we could take a break and go have a cookie.
So, it'll take a few minutes. Thank you so much. Somehow, our room has started to clear.
You say do I? I was... Yeah, the cookie's at the end.
I know. Hi.
Sorry, I'm late.
Oh, that's okay.
We know where you are.
Okay, so, we're going to move into our Buildings and Grounds presentation. This is kind of, this is part one of, at least, part two, maybe more than that, I don't know, we'll see. But Buildings and Grounds needs are something that the board has been discussing a lot over the past year. The Buildings and Grounds Committee has been very active. We've got a lot, a lot going on. So, Michael, I turn it over to you.
You just took all the words out of my mouth.
No, did I?
Okay. Good evening, everybody. As she said, I'm here as at least part one of the Buildings and Grounds facilities. This month, I'll be talking mostly about what we've done this past summer, this past year, some immediate things. And next month, I'll be talking about phase two, part two, where we're going to be going, what we're going to be working on now. And I just want to let you know, we did have a very eventful summer, and I want to let you know how we got there. First of all, we started having weekly maintenance meetings with my maintenance staff to try to identify any issues or concerns on campus or in the facilities themselves. We also had completed our building condition survey in January by EMG, is a company, it's a external analysis by a company out of Baltimore. We're required to do this once every five years by SED. They also identified some areas that they thought we could be working on, and between the maintenance people and us, we put together a spreadsheet and prioritized for health and safety, the most important issues. With that, we started our Buildings and Grounds meetings, and we discussed many of my recommendations from the spreadsheet. The committee had input and many suggestions. We obtained pricing, and it was recommended by the Buildings and Grounds Committee to try to bundle projects for better pricing, and this did seem to work. It was pretty good. We then had John D'Angelo from, he's an architect from Fuller, and D'Angelo come in, and he did a walk, walk-around with the Buildings and Grounds Committee, just to look at some of the projects we were talking about. And I also gave him the spreadsheet with the pricing, and he looked at the pricing, and he gave some recommendations, which I'll get into later on. And he agreed that the projects that we did show him on the walk-through were all necessary, and he thought the pricing was within the range of reasonability. Let's get to the projects. First one we did was the high school parking lot. Last year, we had some people come to the board meeting, and they had some concerns about the parking out in Mountain Avenue, so we all put our heads together and figured out a plan. And we excavated the eastern part of the high school parking lot, and we gathered 25 additional student parking spaces. Now, they're all slotted out and lines between, they're all numbered, and so far, it's been working spectacularly. The kids have all been coming in. There's five mile an hour speed limit signs up. They've been very nice. Most of them seem to carpool. There seems to be an average of about three kids in each car, which I was pretty surprised about. That's pretty good. So, I think that's been a huge success for us, to go with the additional visitor parking we put in Mabel Merritt back in May. It's taken a lot of stress off the streets and people just parking anywhere. We also, after we put up the parking there, we put up a perimeter fence around the parking lot. And then, we also, the same company, extended our fencing down here at the south, east, southwestern part of the football field, right down by the detention pond. We expanded it a little, and it gave us a little bit more spectator, spectator room, so it's not as crowded down there. So, that's, that's been a big help. We gathered, we earned about another 15 feet there. Okay. A big problem we had last year, anybody that saw around the south end of the elementary building, was drainage. We had a lot of washing out through the garden and the whole playground area, and if anybody saw, we were always getting rain, and the heavy rainstorms going through the mulch in the playground, and it was washing all over. So, as part of our walk-through with John D'Angelo, he recommended, okay, let's start at the top here, where the water starts coming in. Recommended we put a little swale in by the access road, right to the north of the playground. And now, that water runs down into Craig's Side Drive into a catch basin there. From there, that's now preventing a lot of the water from going through the mulch, and the water that's still running through the asphalt, we put another catch basin in, in the southeastern corner of the elementary school. And we connected this catch basin to existing drainage that, you know, that was there. And if you follow it down now through the garden, we get down to the southeastern corner of the big gymnasium. We had a problem with a catch basin there that always seemed to overflow, and this was eroding a lot of the soil alongside the gymnasium. Well, after some work there this summer, after doing some excavating, seeing all the piping was fine, we discovered that there was a blockage in there. There was an old plug in there, a big, like, seven-pound plug in the piping. And they cut the piping out, took the plug out, reattached the piping. Now, we did have some, we had like a big storm in July. I know people can't remember. It seems to have been dry for so long, but we did have one big storm there. I was out there for 15 minutes in my glory, watching the rain come down and going down through all the drainage, and everything was working fine, so I was happy to see that. Okay. Okay, there is also another area by the playground, right where we dropped the buses off, the elementary drop-off. In the past, we've had, it's all been dirt there, and it's been problematic in springtime and the winter, thanks to Julia pointing it out to me a couple of times. It's been muddy in the spring, icy in the winter. Now, we had that asphalt. It was a very small area. We did that, and it was just some of the extra asphalt that we had from extending the asphalt for the drainage. And I think now we'll be able to maintain that area. It's going to be much safer for the children. We also did the Mabel Merritt fire escapes. We, the frames were reconditioned. A couple of the, of the steps were a little bit loose because the framing on it was deteriorating, and we had them come in, and they reworked everything, and those steps are all in tip-top shape now. The steps by the cafeteria, right out here, initially, we were looking at them and thought that we were going to have to knock them all out and replace them, but we went, we went in there with fiber, not fiber, I'm sorry, metal rod, and, excuse me, rebar, sorry, rebar, and we went down about three and a half feet, and we found that the structure was still sound, and there was no cracking in the concrete, and it was good. So, we did another process with a product called Dexotex, and it's, it seems to be pretty good. Salt is not supposed to bother it. It is water repellent. It's not slippery, and it was like, you know, one-half the cost, so, and it's supposed to last for a long time. I talked to John D'Angelo about it. He's heard of the product. He thinks the product is good. Okay, we also worked on the air handling units in the big gymnasium. We had two air handling units there. They're from 1974, I believe. We were looking at prices to put new ones in, and it was a big, big, big number. John D'Angelo thought that we had done some work in them back in the Energy Performance Contract five years ago, and he was right. I looked into it. There was new motors put in then. So, what we did is we reconditioned everything else, the coils, filters, and everything else for a fraction of the cost of what new ones would have cost. So, we're in good shape with these air handling units now. In the bell parking lot, we did two things. The wall caps were becoming loose, and they were a little concern to us, so we had those repointed, and now they're in good shape also. We also did the stairways going into the bell entrance, and now that's a little more level, and that's not loose. Okay, we've done a lot of work over at St. Basil's, just, just minor stuff, to get everything back to working order up there, and had inspections there this summer from the local building inspector, the fire inspectors, and we had an hair report, and everything worked out fine, and we got it ready for September 1st opening. And something that we're going, working on now, back in April, we did do water testing here for lead, and we sampled what we call the potable water here in this building, and everything came back, I mean, better than perfect, just about. There was less than one part per million, and the standard here is 15 parts per million. And there was, they couldn't find anything. There was nothing they could find. The state now has come out with some new mandates that we have to test for lead in what they consider potable water, which now means every sink in the building, in the bathrooms, we don't have to do slop sinks like janitor closets, if, you know, we keep them locked. We do not have to do science room sinks if, if it's known that we do not allow food and drink in there. We're going to test those ones anyway, the ones in the science rooms. So, that'll be done in the next two days. I think it's going to be Friday morning. We're having an outside company come in, Lewis Berger. They're an environmental company, and they're going to be coming in and testing the water. And we have to have the elementary schools done by September 30th, and by October 31st, we have to have up to grade 12 done. I wanted to talk about one thing that we had looked at at the Buildings and Grounds Committee that we have not implemented yet, and we're still in discussion about that, and you'll hearing, be hearing about that from me, probably more at the next meeting, and that's the bleachers in the gymnasium. We have obtained quotes on fixing them, repairing them, and as well as replacing them. So, that's still under discussion, and you'll be hearing more about that from me in the future. Okay? Thank you.
Now, next month, you're going to be talking about phase two, and we're going to be using the building condition survey and taking a look at what will happen this year as well.
That's correct. That's correct.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
You said something about doing stuff at St. Basil's, what's our obligation to do at St. Basil's?
Well, we were, we just got it cleaned up good for us as far as waxing floors, cleaning the floors, we did put two emerg-
This is for the academy.
Right, so we rent space there and we're responsible for maintaining it? Is that how that's working?
Well, we're bartering space and-
Okay.
Yeah, so there, there were some things that we, in order to get a certificate of occupancy, that we had to make sure it was in place and that's what we did over the summer. So, alarms, light, emergency lighting-
But that became our obligation and not their obligation?
For the classrooms that we're using, yes.
Yes.
But it was also very limited in scope. Most of it, they, they had been using that building as a school for years, so-
They still are, upstairs, yes.
So, it's just some of the things that we needed for the State Education Department.
Thank you.
Okay.
Michael, the cost for the water testing, is, is that, is there additional cost for that? Is that something that the state pays for, 'cause it's their mandate, is it something we are paying for?
A lot of it is still, it's not all in concrete, not all set in stone yet, but the way they're thinking right now, that it's all is gonna be reimbursable through aid to the school districts. And that's what Craig Napolitano told me from Lewis Berger, I had a newspaper article the other day, it said, the word they used was most of the money was gonna be reimbursable. So, it's, they're gonna have another webinar on it next week and maybe I'll find out more about that end of it.
But this is a perfect example of a mandate coming from the state and us having to jump through hoops to make sure we do it, not that it's a bad thing to do, but another example of us having to jump through hoops and having to come up with the cost, with the payment ourselves and to hope that will get reimbursed at some point.
Especially when we already tested-
Right.
-here ourselves in April.
Gotcha. Good, so, I think you just said this, but the next, kind of the next, that was like a review of what's been done and then I know that we have, you have provided the board with a list of, and maybe the list is shifted slightly since the last time we saw it, but a list of things that can need to continue to be dealt with-
That's correct.
And that's something that, you know, we need to look at and get information about and how much does this cost and what's the priority and so that we can give some input on how we feel like we, it should move forward and then, and then it moves forward.
Actually, we're having a Buildings and Grounds meeting-
I was just gonna mention that.
Okay.
We've already added to that spreadsheet a little bit and we're gonna have a Buildings and Grounds meeting next Thursday on the 29th at 3:15. So, I'll be bringing the Building Condition Survey to that meeting and some more recommendations from my maintenance staff and myself and we're gonna just start that way with some stuff on, I already have on there for phase two of our project on that existing Excel spreadsheet. So, it's, it's, it's a project and it's growing, that spreadsheet's just growing and take things off, put new things on. I even have some things on there for phase three already, so-
Yeah, it's probably an ongoing.
So, yeah, like I said, the Buildings and Grounds Committee is next Thursday and at 3:15.
Are there any other questions about anything from the board regarding, any questions from the public about the Buildings and Grounds issues? Okay. Okay, Michael, I think that's great.
See, that's silly, you didn't have to change tape.
Thank you so much. Okay, we're going into Dr. Bowers's report.
Okay, so, not too many things on my list, but one of the things, and this is following what Michael was talking about, is a discussion on some of the new mandates that were required to do through the state. One is, was, is actually not on the list, but we had a discussion in our Administrative Council Meeting and we'll start, we'll be starting to share information with parents that there is a new mandate of, well, I should say, in the past, there was a mandate that we had to do 12 fire drills every year and it was eight in the fall, eight in the fall and four in the spring. And so, now the state has changed that and they're asking us to do 12 drills, four of which are going to be lockdowns. And so, there is a new mandate that the number of lockdown drills has increased, as you know, we did a lockdown last spring, but this is going to be a regular part of the drill. So, we are going to be scheduling in October, our first lockdown drill, we'll continue with the, the fire drills, but this is something that, that all districts have to do, it's, you know, certainly health and safety and we understand the reasoning behind it, but we also don't want parents to, to worry when they see that the number of lockdowns is far greater than has happened in the past, so, just to, we'll be sending out more information, I will be sending a letter and so there's, there's some, some changes there. There was also-
And Dr. Bowers, I'm sorry, that's four lockdown drills in addition to the 12 fire drills or in place of, so now there's eight fire drills-
And four lockdowns.
Okay.
Yep, that's the new mandate. There is also a new mandate of something that we, we have numbers and acronyms all over education, so this is 3012D, which is a new mandate and an increase from the law that existed 3012C, which they also call APPR, the Annual Professional Performance Review. So, this year, there were, it actually came from the governor's office, so the governor attached some information or some mandates to 3012C, which is a mandate for us to have a, a very specific guideline for evaluation of teachers. And this year, we had to increase the information and increase the amount of information that's being sent to the State Education Department. And one of the things that was required and negotiated with the HFA was NWEA testing. So, we now have a way of measuring the growth a child exhibits from kindergarten through 12th grade. So, if we have somebody that goes through and starts as a kindergarten now, you will have a, a profile of the growth in both math and in reading or ELA as the child goes through with the norm test, the NWEA. So, at this point, I believe the middle school has already completed their NWEA testing, the elementary school is starting and there will be NWEA testing in October at the high school level. So, as people start to hear about it, realize that we understand that it's one more test that we're doing, but it's also the way that we're gonna measure growth and it's going to meet our APPR 3012D requirements. So, those are some of the new mandates that we have this year. We've also had a number of meetings recently. Dr. Shoah met with a group of parents, what would you say, 20 or 25 parents tonight that came? He is our new Student Support Services Specialist, kind of slash PPS responsibilities and he met with the parents tonight as a meet and greet, so we welcome Anthony or Tony as, and so we're glad that he is here. We did not get to introduce him before, but he'll, when he gives his report, he'll talk a little bit about that. We also had a meeting with our Booster Club and I'm gonna ask if Chris Salam, I don't know if you, are you gonna be talking a little bit about it in, in your report? And at this point, Laura, would you mind just saying a few minutes? She was our board representative at the meeting and was very helpful along with Margaret, who was also there and both ladies were very helpful in bringing some questions and some potential changes within the athletic department to a forum for discussion, so.
I'll start it off and then Margaret, you can add anything. I just wanted to say, I thought it was great, it was cooperative and it was great to have conversation in person rather than on social media and we felt like we would be able to get things resolved that way. So, it was very helpful to have a wide variety of representatives come together and express their opinions and we were able to have conversation, come to some sort of resolution, beginning of some sort of resolution and I think it got the conversation started and I think we're heading in the right direction.
Okay, Margaret, any thoughts?
Agreed.
Okay, thank you. And then when Chris comes up, I'm sure he will share a little bit about his experience with it and it was a great meeting and we appreciate all the people that came and were discussing things in the best interest of our students and their health and safety and sports and all the things that we want them to, to do in a very positive way. We had, we are also about to have our first Safety Committee meeting on the 26th, Monday the 26th, at 3:30 in Room B1, if anybody has an interest in that and that will continue to talk about the health and safety needs of our district through the year. And we have our next Board of Education meeting, it's a business meeting on Tuesday, October the 4th at 7 o'clock in the music room, so please feel free to join us.
Okay, great, so going into the, in further information reports, we'll start with Principal Harrington.
Okay, hello again. I'll be brief. We had an opportunity, of course, earlier to welcome again our new staff and acknowledge, you know, their wonderful qualifications as they join our, our family here. I just wanna make mention of, there's, there's certain positions sometimes I think that the larger community doesn't always recognize, people in certain roles that, that have a tremendous impact on the day-to-day management and going-ons of a building. And I just wanna make mention of someone who's been with me in a time that I've been here and that's Carol Flamansky. This is her last year. She'll be retiring after this year and I just really wanna publicly thank her for all of her hard work in getting us off to a fine start to the school year. So, a big warm thank you to Carol. I'm not sure what I'm gonna do without her as the year winds down and we move into the school year after this, but I wanna certainly acknowledge her fine work, so, thank you.
And we have somebody behind you that we'd like you to introduce.
Sure. So, as Brent was just mentioning, Carol Flamansky, it's as if Janine has been with us for a while. Figuring out our student information systems and the ability to take attendance appropriately between two separate buildings and in addition to being the new greeter is a very large task to take on. She continues to have a smile on her face every single morning when she comes in, she says, you know, hello, good morning, she smiles to all the children and the parents. She's been a true asset to have in the building and, and things don't get by her. So, I just wanna thank Janine for her hard work and continuing to figure out the system of Power School and keep asking those questions, it'll, it'll all happen, so, welcome. Just very quickly, I know Dr. Bowers had talked a little bit about NWEA and started sharing a little bit of that in her report, but Peggy, can you hear me? She's, she's on mute. All right, so she gave a thumbs up?
No, I mean, people at the microphone should speak up a little, 'cause I'd be like, I can't hear.
So, I know we had spoken a little bit about NWEA and Peggy joined us, I don't know how many years ago now, in terms of having a conversation of really looking at student achievement and how students were doing in school and the growth that they were making. So, I just wanna reiterate Dr. Bowers's words in terms of we are now using NWEA, this has replaced Ames Web. So, I think the kids at the beginning were all going, what are we doing, what are we doing? And we're saying, wait, wait, this really isn't much different, we've been doing Ames Web for years, this is just the new way for us to get baseline data. Just very quickly, NWEA does not have a ceiling. So, where Ames Web, the students would take Ames Web if they were well above grade level, you never really knew how far above grade level they were. If they were well below grade level and you were giving them an assessment that was at their particular grade level, you really didn't know how far below grade level they were and what they may need. So, NWEA does not have a ceiling, so therefore, we can really target our instruction and know exactly where our students are and then we can continue to measure that growth throughout the year. So, it's very exciting for a lot of us, including the teachers who in the middle school were chomping at the bit to get this data. They, you know, they were going so fast, I was saying, but the data system isn't ready yet, all of the data's not in there, we can't start right away and it forced us to work very diligently to get it in so that they could get started. So, I just wanna thank the middle school staff for really persisting and wanting to make sure they got that data as soon as possible to help us with our grouping and really targeting our instruction to student needs. So, that's that.
Great, thank you.
Principal Karuji?
All right. So, we had an awesome, extremely successful opening this year. I have to say that not only am I proud to be here, but our Haldane High School students are amazing and continue to just mesmerize. We had grade level assemblies, which brought kids together, they got to hear expectations, they got to meet me. Senior parking has been going extremely well. Students have been not only responsible, but also extremely appreciative of everything. It's also had a very positive impact in the neighborhood around the school. Very special thanks to Mike and Gary for, for working to put it in place, it really, really has been phenomenal. The senior kayak trip on September 9th was a hit. I'm still recovering from the Hudson River. The seniors got a chance to kayak in the Hudson River, I mean, that's amazing. And there were two groups, one that went on a walk, one that took a hike up Mount Beacon and very special thanks to Joe Verge Damo, Mrs. Shields for helping out, setting things up and all the chaperones for all their hard work and assistance. We were able to successfully roll out Chromebooks as a one-to-one device for all ninth and 10th graders. The 11th and 12th graders will continue to use their iPads as a one-to-one device and we wanna give a special shout out to Ms. Leah Horn, she really made it happen so that every freshman and sophomore, day one, you know, she was ready and she really, she really worked her tail off to do that. We held a financial aid presentation tonight to, to help students and families learn about all of the college financial aspects, run by our very own Kristin Moscow. Kristin, stand up, will you? This is a wonderful opportunity, by the way, she is, she's phenomenal, she's already been handling all the academic issues, she's been supportive in every way, we wanna welcome you, by the way, this is for you. And thanks for putting together the Financial Aid Night as well. That's about it.
Mr. Shoah. Dr. Shoah, I should say.
Thanks, everyone. Just to touch really quickly on what Dr. Bowers said, I was upstairs just a few moments ago, meeting with about 30 smiling faces and dedicated parents. It's such a wonderful thing to see such an invested group of people in a school district that care not only just so much about their own children and their own children's successes, but about the scope of the district's vision for its students and especially those who have different abilities. So, as a special dad, a father of a child who has Down Syndrome, it's a very reassuring and wonderful thing for me to be a part of in, in my work. So, I'm very glad to be here and very thankful to Dr. Bowers and the board and to the entire Haldane community for giving me this opportunity, it's been fantastic so far. And we're how many, how many days in? It's, it's already been such a wonderful experience. And speaking of so many days in, I have a few things to share. I hope I'm audible.
Yeah, lean over like this.
Okay. I'll swallow the mic.
I thought she was just taking a nap. I wonder if I turn it, just so you can hear, let's see.
Thanks, thank you.
Hello. So, just in, in three major sections, I'm just gonna review some of the actions I've taken so, thus far. In terms of the supervision of individualized education programs, otherwise known as IEPs, Section 504 plans and the Committee on Special Ed, otherwise known as CSE, I've begun chairing CSE meetings for, for program evaluations, connecting IEP mandated services with student schedules and 504 accommodations with classroom procedures. So, I wanna say that I'm enormously thankful to the building principals, to Mr. Twardy and Ms. Travis for all the hard work and dedication and putting all that together. As we know, students who have related services and mandated services, it can be a very tricky thing to put together the puzzle that creates the picture for their successful education program and the folks sitting to my left here are so dedicated to having that work to be profoundly supportive of those students, it's a very wonderful thing to see. Special Services is coordinating, oh, I just, I just covered that, never mind. The second thing, Haldane Academy, as those of you may know, Haldane Academy is our new program at St. Basil for Divergent Learners. Dr. Bowers and I had, had a discussion about labeling as an alternative high school, which is really not so much as it is a place for students to go who haven't had their needs fully realized and in others, other settings, whether that be an outplacement or at the, at the high school here, it's a place where their needs can be differentiated or their, their needs can be met- It's a place where their needs can be differentiated, or their needs can be met with differentiated instruction and with other supports and materials that are necessary to keep them on track towards graduation. So nine students are currently enrolled in the academy, which is blossoming with ways to engage and inspire these students, including landscaping, BOSI's tech programs, Regents prep, and online course sections. Dr. Bowers and I recently met with these academy students that are approaching graduation to plan their diploma pathway, which are as divergent as those learners themselves. Some are interested in carpentry or electricity, automotive tech. So in planning their engagement and in planning their path to graduation, it's been a wonderful discussion to have, and with Dr. Bowers as a partner in that. And the third piece that I'll mention is our learner profiles, which is something that I'm coming in a little bit late on. This is, I believe, the second year in sort of the strategic plan regarding the learner profiles. So in jumping, jumping in the deep end there, I visited the Yellen Center for Mind, Brain, and Education last week with some of the other teachers to learn more about the district's strategic plan initiative for greater student understanding of their own learning strengths and needs through the development of these profiles and the neurodevelopmental constructs that will help these students understand how their strengths can live through challenges. Dr. Yellen, who is the mastermind behind this, will visit Haldane next week to help us further develop this initiative, specifically to help the team determine the instrument to be used to create each student's profile, which will indicate their learning strengths and challenges, giving them the insight into their best learning style and pathway. Okay? Oh, and I wanted to say one more thank you to Kristin Moscow, who was very instrumental in helping us develop the graduation pathway to each of the academy students. And since he's sitting here, to Gabriel Horn as well for being a pioneer and a visionary and a very dedicated instructor to these students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Song.
Good evening, everyone. Peggy, can you hear me? Okay. I'd like to start off by, you know, telling everyone about something great that happened over the weekend. The varsity boys cross-country team went up to an invitational up in Queensberry, and out of 20 schools in Division II, which consisted of all smaller schools, we actually placed in first, and it was the first time that the boys have ever won an invitational. So I just wanted to congratulate all of our great student athletes on that team, as well as Coach Lucassio for all their accomplishments over the weekend. Our girls also did extremely well. They placed sixth out of 20, so it was a very productive weekend against a lot of great competition from various sections across the state. So just a huge shout-out to them. Dr. Bowers mentioned before that we had a meeting last week with the Booster Club. We also had several coaches representing various sports, as well as Margaret and Laura attend, and we discussed a few various issues regarding athletics. The topics of discussion were team uniforms, apparel, warm-ups, and just trying to find consistency among our programs so we have a unified look that promotes school spirit and equity across the board. So I just wanted to thank everyone that came out to those meetings. I thought it was a very productive first one. It's the start of something great. It's going to take time for change, but I'm positive that we're going to have a solution that's best for our student athletes and for our community. So thank you for those that attended, and when we have the next one scheduled, I will reach out to those members, and hopefully everyone can make it again. Next, I also wanted to mention that Dawn Skanga is our new president. It was mentioned earlier before for the Booster Club. I just wanted to thank her for taking on this role and for volunteering her time, because it is a very important role in the athletic department and the district. I also wanted to thank Rob McCollum. He's the former president who Dawn took over for. Rob has been a pleasure to work with over the last year. He's done a lot behind the scenes for our student athletes, and I just wanted to thank him for all his hard work and his dedication, because Rob's been a great asset to me and to our student athletes. So thank you, Rob. That's it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Twardy.
How are you? I'm back again. I would just like to, we already talked to you about the eventful summer, but we also had a lot of work going on inside the buildings. And through the fantastic guidance of Cheryl Wanzel, our head cleaner, she, they far exceeded my expectations for how the building should look for opening. They did a great job. Place was sparkling, cleaning, a lot of new painting. One thing I forgot to mention before with the maintenance staff, they also put new carpeting up in the middle school library, which looks great. So I'd like to thank my whole staff. They really put in a superb effort this summer. I'd also like to talk a little bit about transportation. We had a consultant come in this summer to work with Elise and myself to go over our routing and, you know, see if they have any suggestions, and this is like the first of a multi-tiered process. So it's just like the beginning of stage right now. We don't have a real lot of ideas yet, but we did take an audit of a lot of our routes in district runs, how many kids are riding on each bus, for example, and seeing what it looks like for the future, and possibly being able to go to a, one transportation in the morning and one in the afternoon. In other words, everybody rides on one bus in the morning and one in the afternoon, that we'd have the same starting time for everybody. We'd be able to do that with maybe one more bus. It wasn't as bad as we initially thought. So that's just a thought for the future. We also looked at a lot of our out-of-district runs, and we did do a lot more combinations. We lost some places from last year. We gained a couple. We've had a couple of changes, even just locally with Basil and the Manitou. So we have combined a couple more runs. We're now doing Putt Valley with our tech run. We're doing St. Mary's with our Unionvale run, and everything seems to be falling in place nicely. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I have a question for Julia.
Yeah.
So how long does it take for you all to get the results for the NWEA assessments? I know one of the real frustrations with, you know, when you and I talked about this several years ago, and it's something that the field talks about generally, is that what, you know, among the multiple drawbacks of state tests is that you give them and you get the results six months later, when kids are actually with a whole new set of teachers.
Right.
So how quickly do you get results from NWEA?
There's a window of testing, and once you close the window and nobody else in your district is testing, you can gather the data within hours. So we do have to wait for everybody in district to be tested, but then shortly thereafter, we will be able to review the information in the data. We do, as part of purchasing the product, we also have some PD available to us, so we will be having some professional development for the teachers in terms of interpreting the data. Some of us love data more than others, so we really want to make sure the teachers understand how to use the reports and the different data that they have at their fingertips. So that's another piece to mention.
And there's strands, and there's also more detail. And, I mean, I haven't looked at an NWEA report in a long time, but my memory of when is that there's actually a lot more detail.
Yeah, extensive amount of detail. It categorizes the different strands of strengths and weaknesses. Math is an easy one to talk about in terms of looking at the five different standards that you measure and really focusing in on whether the deficit is in fractions or where the deficit is in geometry. It really targets into what the specific deficit would be in or strength would be in. And then it also helps you as a classroom teacher, since we've identified students and connected them to a teacher, it helps you in your groupings. So if you're doing enrichment work, you know what students are doing very well with different concepts, and you can then group your students according to this measure. And again, it's one measure. I think we've really, as a district, done very well in using multiple measures, but I do believe this is a much better measure than anything we've ever used since I've been here.
Thank you.
For anybody who's unaware, Peggy, will you just, for a moment, list your title, your, what's your doctorate in?
Developmental psychology.
Right, and then what do you do for a living?
Oh, so my profession is I am an education researcher. So I've been conducting research in child development and education research for a long time.
And I just have to, sorry, Peggy, I have to jump in and just say Peggy was, I don't know how many years ago Peggy, we first looked at this program, but Peggy was a parent, not a board member, that we called and said, what do you know? Like, tell us, what has the research shown? What do you believe? This is well before APPR even existed. NWEA is something that is a very strong research-based program that we wanted to bring here before all of that. So Peggy helped us a long time ago with this.
Yeah, and they're nonprofit. I mean, not that, not that you can't have for-profit businesses that don't provide really valuable profits. We know that's the case, but one of the, a lot of the frustration that we hear parents talking about, or I hear parents talking about, when they're wanting to not have their children be tested as part of these larger testing efforts, is that, you know, Pearson's making, you know, Pearson, it's all, and a lot of it is Pearson, you know, it's making a ton of money. And, and NWEA, I think, is a spin-off originally from the University of Oregon, but it really was developed by researchers and psychometricians to, you know, provide useful information for teachers to use in targeting instruction. So, so yes, so I know a bit about NWEA, not a lot, but some.
Thank you, Peggy. So if anyone's wondering, Peggy's an expert. She knows, she knows what she's talking about.
And what better than that we're killing two birds with one stone, more importantly, recognizing how our children are growing, but also, as you said, filling the mandates.
Yep. Any communication from the public? Oh, sorry.
I have one more of Julia again. So I know I grabbed you out there, but I was looking at Julia's report, and it says that the middle school Facebook page continues to be updated, and I just grabbed Julia out there to ask a little bit, but can you share that with the board, what you just shared with me?
Sure, sure, sure.
Thank you.
So yes, we did start a Facebook page for the middle school. It is listed under my name, after doing quite a bit of research over the summertime in terms of the best way to do this. The recommendation is to use your name. It tends to help some of that social media issues you run into when people don't want to pick up the phone or sit in meetings and have conversation. If your name is associated with it, it actually helps them to recognize, let me pick up the phone and call her, instead of just, you know, typing away here if there is an issue. So I will continue to send out the Alert Now messages to middle school parents. I know it's hard sometimes to get information from children at that age, so the information will be blasted out, but I will also be putting a blurb, a quick blurb, on Facebook for people to see that information. And we continue to update the Haldane Minds Twitter feed as well. So I encourage everybody, friend me on Facebook under Julia Sniffin. Follow us on Haldane underscore Minds on Twitter, and it's just another way to try to get information out.
Any communication from the public?
Well, can I just say goodnight to the administrators?
Yes.
And the teachers, go home and get a good night's sleep.
Well, you can stay.
You're welcome to stay.
You can stay, but...
Okay, we're going into consent agenda minutes. This is the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held in 9:06. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion? Second.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
So what are the tutor appointments? What does, what does that exactly mean?
There are times when we have kids that can't be here for medical reasons, or if there's a potential where a child is out due to a suspension, there are, we provide instruction for the students in a different way. And there are certain mandates. If a child has been suspended, we try not to do that often, but we also want to keep their education going. But it's, most of it is for medical reasons. If you have a child that just can't be in, we provide tutoring.
So these, so the ones that we have for appointments, so do they tutor when it's not in school time?
Yeah.
When they're not in the classroom?
Generally, yep. It's usually after school.
And so then this is in addition to their regular?
Yeah.
This is not?
And so when we have, when we have a child that is in need of a tutor, we put a request out there and somebody will say that they're available.
Got it. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There is no consent agenda financial. That might be the first time I've ever seen that. Moving on to consent agenda personnel. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion?
Second.
Discussion? I'm just going to note, Dr. Bowers, you can tell me if I'm wrong about this, but Ms. Fribata is not being appointed as the advisor of the Blue Notes because Ms. Mechalakis has, is now available to be the Blue Note advisor. It is not because Ms. Fribata was, is somehow being...
Well, we didn't know if Margaret was going to be able to do that.
Right.
She's had some medical issues, but yes, she's back.
Right, so it is a positive for Ms. Mechalakis. It is not a negative for Ms. Fribata. Good. Anything else we need to talk about in, there was a lot, lots of stuff here. I think it's all...
These six periods were the ones that we kind of tabled to this one because of the names from last meeting.
That's right. That's right. We didn't have the names listed, so the names are now listed. Peggy, did you have any questions about the six-period assignments that you wanted to ask? Now's a good time.
Um...
Just what were you asking? What do we approve and what we don't approve?
Yeah, so, I mean, so, yes, so I, I think, you know, I think this reflects the fact that, you know, I'm still a relatively new board member, and I wasn't, I know the issue of these, of these six-period appointments has come up a couple of times, and I've had some confusion about it. And so I was just actually, I had some questions about, what's the proto, what is typically the protocol that we follow in terms of approving the, I mean, all of it's in the budget, right? So that's the most important thing.
Right.
But in terms of approving the courses and approving the people that fulfill those courses, I think I sort of lost track of what the steps are, and I just would appreciate knowing what they are. And I reviewed, I went back and reviewed agendas for several months, trying to figure out what it was, and wasn't able to do that on my own.
So there are really two steps in the six, in approving six-period assignments. One's during the budget cycle, where we put, we have a certain amount of money that's put aside for six-period assignments. Then, based on a number of things, including enrollment, the AIS needs, Academic Intervention Services needs, Special Education needs, we have teachers who contractually will teach five that will take on a sixth period. And it all depends on a number of different reasons why that specific situation occurs. So what we, I mean, as we were talking about state testing and some of the issues with the delays, I mean, one of the things we're required to do is give Academic Intervention Services based on the new cut points for the state tests, and every year that's a moving target. And so what you've recently, there have been six-period assignments based on the number of students that didn't necessarily make the cut points, and so we have teachers that are giving services contractually. Our Special Education teachers have a sixth-period assignment, and in other situations, we have more students that want to take a specific course or a type of course, and that would also warrant a six-period assignment. So it's really based more in the latter part of the decision-making. It's based more on student need, and so we can guesstimate how many kids we're going to have in AIS services, but we can't, we can't determine that until the scores come out and we understand the cut points and we understand what the State Education Department wants us to do.
Right, so that, that would need to change makes a lot of sense to me. I just didn't know, based on some of the wording of this and the agenda, I couldn't remember if we needed to approve the positions first, and then those positions would be posted, and a faculty could say, yes, I want to have that six-period assignment. Or if the appropriate protocol was what we got, for example, in, on August 22nd, which was the list of all the appointments and the, and the people who were going to fill them. That's fine with me, if that's the way it is. I just couldn't remember...
It's usually both, and there are times when, during the first month of school, when things are kind of shaking out, that we'll need a couple more six-period assignments.
All right.
So did I answer your question?
Yes, but I'm not sure we ever, I can't find where we actually appointed that list that we got on the 22nd, but I think there's a chance that I've missed something, so I don't want to take up the, our time. So I don't want to take up our time on that.
Yeah, I think we did that.
We did that. The only thing that we asked was to have the names listed because the last time they weren't listed.
Oh, okay. So, yes, so the, and there will be times where it will be done over multiple meetings.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions about personnel? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, going into our policy review. So Dr. Bowers did a little reconnaissance to figure out if this policy was, in fact, a new policy, why weren't we seeing any strikes or markings to let us know what was changing. And she discovered...
This is actually the policy for the AIS services and I think, or the RTI services was kind of a quandary because we have been required to do, to meet these requirements for many, many years at this point. But the mandate for the policy is something that's brand-new. So it wasn't a revised policy, even though the services have been provided to our students for years. It is a new policy, but it's for something that has already happened. It's just now the mandate for this policy to occur.
And AIS is academic intervention services.
Intervention services and RTI is response to intervention, which is measuring to make sure that the intervention that you're giving a student or students is actually working.
So like the NWEA testing may bring to light that a student is having difficulty and you may have to do AIS or RTI.
Right. And the state exams also, if the student doesn't make a cut point, and it may not be necessarily a three, where it used to be, anybody under a three. But now they keep changing what a three means. And so what used to be a three was usually between a two and a three, about 65 to 70%. Now, in most cases, it's usually 80 to 85. So it doesn't, a child may not necessarily make the cut, but they may not require remediation either.
Does the Board have any questions about this policy? I mean, it looks pretty straightforward to me, but go ahead.
I have two comments about it.
Yep.
So, page three, the second paragraph states, "The district has developed a description of the academic intervention services offered grades K through 12." Offered, well, actually, there might be something a little bit, "Offer two grades K through 12 students in need of such services." And then the district will review this and revise this list. I mean, I know this is the policy as recommended by our policy service, but would it make sense to let, I guess one question is, would it make sense to let somebody who went to this policy, you know, where they would find that description of academic intervention services? And then, oh, and then the next paragraph reads, "Perennial notification of students who have been determined to need academic intervention services will be provided as per Commissioner's regulations." And my question about that is, where would a parent find what the regulations are regarding to how they should be communicated to?
Yep. Well, if a child is under the cut point, there is a letter that goes home to each home explaining that they are eligible for academic intervention or RTI services.
And that's the Commissioner's regulations?
That's the Commissioner's, yes, regulation, cut point that changes annually.
Okay. All right. That's helpful. Okay. I didn't realize if, I didn't know if that was like this other, like written document, yeah, that would want to refer past.
There is, there's, well, there's a document that comes from the State Education Department every year that specifies the cut points based on the tests, the grades and the type of test. The other, the AIS services or the RTI services, we have a requirement that we need to update and send to the State Education Department on a regular basis, our AIS plan or our RTI plan. We also have to update our professional development plan and a number of other things and safety regulations, which is something that we have to put on file with State Ed on a regular And that's the document that explains what AIS services here.
Right. So it makes sense to me that since those documents change on a regular basis, it would be difficult to refer, I guess, in my first reading of this, I thought, well, we should point the reader of this policy to where they can find those lists and those recommendations. But if they change on a regular basis, maybe then we just assume that if somebody has questions about this policy, should they read it, they would just reach out to you to ask you?
Right.
Or somebody, right?
And we can give them the AIS plan. We can also direct them to the State Ed website for the cut scores based on the type of test that's given.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions about the policy? This is, at this point, our third reading. I mean, does everybody feel comfortable approving it?
Yeah.
Does anything else anybody needs? Julia, do you want to...
Sure. The recommendation is that the Board of Education adopts policy 7616, pre-referral intervention strategies in general education prior to a referral for special education.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion? Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. A reminder to us that our board retreat is next Tuesday night, starting at 5:30 at Winter Hill. And we'll be continuing on with our retreat agenda that we didn't quite get to everything last time. Any communication from the public? Okay, going into new business. Policy review, first reading. When did this get added to the agenda?
This was, well, I don't know exactly when, but...
This got added definitely like this evening or afternoon.
No.
This was not on last night. It was not on this morning.
We can table it till next meeting if you'd like to do that.
I'd absolutely like to do that because I certainly haven't read it.
Okay. Let's table it.
I'm just going to bring this up, that like, I use my laptop on Tuesdays to catch up on all the last ones. So if anything comes after 12:45, I don't see it beforehand. Like, I think we need to make a cutoff time for when we can add things because...
Yeah, generally, we don't. The reason why we are modifying this policy now is because we do have an organization who came to us to place a J-1 student in our district. And the expectation is that they would come to the district, and we talked about this last time.
Right.
And they would come tuition-free. And so we're modifying and specifying in our policy what was said and what we modified last year with the different policy and we're kind of, which is that if there's extenuating circumstances, the Board hears the circumstances and makes a decision at that point based on the tuition. So this is being, we're updating that, so if this corporation comes back to us, we have something in writing.
So you're saying that we made this policy last year about accepting students. If a student wanted to be considered for acceptance that was not a resident, there was a process of doing that.
Right.
But what you're saying is, we did not specify foreign exchange students in that policy. We just said anybody who's not a resident.
Yep.
And so you're making the suggestion that we add an additional policy that is specific to foreign exchange students, so there can be no gray about what a non-resident is.
Right. And this came from our attorney, and we're just trying to put the pieces in place so we have something in writing about the regulations or the policies of the district.
Okay. Do you feel like this is something that's important to be done tonight? If so, I would suggest we take a little five, 10-minute break so we read it.
I don't think it's, I think it's important that we have, we have proposed a policy and when the Board is ready to approve it, then you will approve it.
Okay.
But we do have something in place and the, or corporation can wait until you approve it.
Okay.
Just for clarification, could you explain the difference between a J-1 visa and an F-1 visa?
The J-1 visa is for a one-year visa for students to come in to go to school in the states. And this is normally comes through either an organization like Rotary or something like EF International, which is the group that approached us. And it's the type of visa that the child gets. There's also a SEVIS rating, which is something that may not, a group that may not come through someplace like Rotary. And this would be if you were to accept, if you had an exchange program where you had students' tuition from China, which is now becoming a much more popular thing for students to do, and then their parents pay for them to go. So it's a different type of visa as opposed to an exchange. It would be a foreign student program.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so I'd like to suggest that we table this until our next meeting.
It's fine.
Thank you. Okay, Board of Education goals. So I guess the first thing to do maybe is to reflect on our goals from last year, just to see if there's, you know, sometimes there's a goal that is kind of ongoing that we want to continue on with. Typically, we create, you know, no more than three to four goals would be a recommendation. So, I mean, I'm not sure where to start this conversation, but perhaps first looking at our goals from last year and saying, is there anything on there that we feel like we would like to continue? Things that come for me, mine for me are the strategic plan's goals. I mean, the strategic plan is still in motion. It's still something that we need to keep in our forefront, in my opinion. But we might look at different things that we're planning on doing this upcoming year in the strategic plan. You know, we can modify kind of the bullet points for it here. But to me, I think keeping the strategic plan's goals in my mind continues to be important.
Definitely.
Absolutely. Gives us a vision.
Agreed.
It's interesting because I just attended the governance seminar in New York Town this weekend, and the suggestion was two to three...
Okay.
...goals that you have vision and that are attainable...
Yeah.
...in some shape or form.
Uh-huh.
And I think the strategic plan is one of those that has a vision, where we want to go and what we want to accomplish. And there's measures to do that.
Yeah, I think that's something we talked about last year, right? It's like, how do we, one of our goals is to make sure that the strategic plan, that we are holding the administration accountable. You know, it's not our job to go in there and make the learning profiles, right?
Right.
But it's our job to make sure that that's happening.
Right.
And to how do we hold the administration accountable for that process, right? Okay, so I just want a broad stroke here. We can get a little more specific. So strategic plan is still a goal. Improved communication channel with the public. To me, that's still a goal. I think that's still something we need to work on. We have some new ideas that we talked about last time about how to work on that perhaps. But to me, that's still something we need to continue working on. I don't know how you guys feel.
I agree.
Yeah, okay.
Even number one...
We could say all of them.
Well, but number one, I mean, think about what, look, it talks about the new Director of Pupil Personnel Services, and we have another new Director of Pupil Personnel Services, and a new principal, and we have another new principal. So we're pretty much in the same position we were last year, with just two different people.
Yes, but I don't feel, I don't know. Last year was a little different.
Well, the structure was new.
Yeah.
So that piece...
That piece is kind of smooth now.
So the structure was new with the two new pieces. Now it's, the structure's the same, but we have two new individuals. So something along the lines of administration, but, you know, not that word.
See, and I kind of look at it from a different angle. I kind of think it's the Board's position now to step back and to allow Dr. Bowers to manage those new positions. Last year, I feel it was a little different. It was a reorg. But I think we all had the right, we made the right decisions, we hired the right people. And now, I mean, in my opinion, I feel it's Dr. Bowers' leadership that will navigate them through. But I feel like it's...
No, I'm with you on that, Laura. Last year's administrative situation, I felt like was very different. I felt like the Board was a little uncertain about the shuffle, the community was uncertain about it. I felt like we had more responsibility to really stay on top of it. I don't agree, I agree. I don't feel the same way this year. I feel like our hires are clearly good ones.
Good point.
Yep. The fourth, maintain fiscal responsibility through a difficult budget year. I mean, I feel like that could be our job every year. That could be a goal for us every year. But I don't know, maybe, I don't feel like it's as pressing this year. Maybe I'm wrong about that. But I feel like, budget-wise, I feel like we're in a pretty good place. Like, I don't feel as nervous about the upcoming budget. I don't feel as nervous about the tax situation. Maybe it's because our reserves are now healthy. So to me, like, looking at last year's goals, I think two and three are things to keep.
Yeah.
I agree.
And I'd like to see something more along the lines of growth, development, or, and I think we're heading in the right direction, and maybe we tie that into the strategic plan, more specifically to how are we developing? And this was one of my questions initially. How does the curriculum flow, K through 12? And are we going to see growth?
Yeah, and that might be, like you just said, in the strategic plan. Maybe that's something to ask Dr. Bowers about, but the K through 12 continuum. I also, things that come to mind for me for the year are all of our buildings and grounds issues. I think that that's going to be very present for us.
Yes.
You could put that into the strategic plan category, you know, in terms of big-picture vision, but I'd kind of like to pull it out as a separate goal personally and allow us to really focus on it, you know, to make sure it's being facilitated as we need it to be.
Well, maybe somehow incorporating fiscal responsibility with that. Like, for example, like what Mike was talking about with the bleachers, we're going to have a decision to make.
Uh-huh.
Do we renovate or do we purchase new bleachers?
Mm-hmm.
So we have to look at, so kind of incorporate those two together, fiscal responsibility within dealing with building and grounds issues.
Yeah. And I think the communication with the public piece is also going to be a part of that, right? They're all tied together.
Yeah. I think have that. The third bullet clearly states the five-year facilities plan. I think what we're trying to say is that we want to drill down. I mean, we're clearly saying that the five-year facilities plan is one of our goals to oversee. I don't know, do we have to really drill down into the details or...
Yeah, because we don't have that yet, correct?
Right.
That's...
The five-year facility plan?
Well, no, we do.
Yes, we do. We got the...
The building condition survey is the five-years facility plan.
They're the same thing.
Right. That's where that list was generated from.
Okay, okay, okay.
The five-year survey, the book, it's basically like a manual, if you really take it.
I was thinking of our, the Haldane's five-year plan. Does Haldane have a five-year facilities plan?
We have one that keeps changing. But it's, we, two years ago, there was a five-year plan that was created before the building condition survey. And then the mandate was for the following year, the building condition survey, and that kind of helped to change it. But we asked our support, we asked the custodial crew and the maintenance to really look at issues that were pressing and to regulate them or to prioritize them.
Yeah, so it seems like we need some sort of...
Yeah. But now we have the building condition survey that's going to help us with that. And so we do have a plan, I don't know if I want to call it, but we do have a list of things, and they're prioritized in year one, two, three, and four. But there may also be some other things that aren't necessarily immediate in health and safety that we want to do as well.
Right. But I mean, even in your own household, it's, you know, the five-year plan is a moving, changeable object. By the time you get the first year's done, you need to be ready to come in the fifth year. Right. The priorities always change.
And something comes up and something that wasn't on... And something comes up and something that wasn't on the front burner is now placed on the front burner, so.
Right.
I mean, when we wrote this goal about a new five-year facilities plan, you know, my memory of what we were thinking about at that time was, was something that was much more related to the strategic plan. Because one of the subcommittees of the strategic planning group was about, was facilities. And instead of addressing, you know, some of the critical repair issues that we're facing now, what that committee was talking about was actually improving the space, not just bringing everything, not just fixing things, but actually improving the space in ways that would support some of these new approaches to, to teaching and learning. So, so, I mean, I mean, so I think, I mean, I don't know what the solution is, but there's a part of me that feels like before, or maybe we do it at the same time, but in a sense, before we began to make grand plans about, about changing the space and addressing some of the space needs, you know, we would need to address some of these, these critical issues that came up in the building survey. But I'm actually, I don't know if I actually agree with that. I don't know, is the right approach, like, well, first we just focus on all the things that really need our immediate attention? And then we turn our attention to, you know, addressing some of the space needs? Or is it appropriate for us to think about those in conjunction with each other?
And one is a much bigger question. It's really related to the instructional needs of the district moving forward. And the other is catching up with some of the things that we were unable to do because of financial restraints.
Right.
And they were just put on, you know, to put on the back burner.
And I think they need to happen in conjunction with each other. I don't think they happen like, okay, let's just do the hard, you know, the important stuff first, then we'll worry about the vision stuff later. I mean, it seems like they need to be kind of done in conjunction and they need to relate to each other.
Yeah. And that was definitely a charge of the strategic plan, but I think we're, if, if we're going to go into that, we're going to have to start looking at it differently than we have in the past because it's a different question we're going to be asking.
Okay, so, supporting the strategic plan, better communication with the public, and buildings and grounds needs. Are those like our three categories? Are there any other, like, overarching categories that we want to add into those three? I think that, like, technology, you know, the website isn't quite where we need it to be yet, but I think that's part of the communication piece.
Yeah, absolutely.
Fiscal responsibility, I think, will weave into the buildings and grounds piece. K through 12 continuum of education, I think, weaves into the strategic plan piece. The individualized learning profiles, I think that's a big one this year that we need to make sure works out. And I think that's in the strategic plan piece. Anything else that's like coming to people's minds is?
I also, as you're thinking about it, and I just want to make sure that it's, because it's not a, an event, the learner profiles is something that's going to take years to create. And have, and get it to the point that we feel it's doing what we hope it will do. Understanding that this is groundbreaking and we're trailblazing and it's not something that exists right now. So I just want to make sure that as people are looking at us, beginning to implement and envision the learner profiles, you realize it's going to be a multi-year process. And probably what we think about right now is the profile and what we use it for is going to be very different in three years.
Right.
And it's going to be an evolutionary process. So I just, it's.
Thank you for reminding us of that. It's not like, okay, now we have it, boom.
Right.
It's, it's, but the process really starts this year.
Yeah, it's already begun.
Right. So, and that's a new, it's a new initiative
Yep.
For the staff.
It is.
Students, for the parents.
And again, I think that's just a bullet under the strategic plan
Yeah.
Because that's the direction.
Yeah, I agree.
We were talking about that we were going.
And really, almost everything under the strategic plan is, is kind of like that evolution. And this is, this is a very, I guess, insightful plan that is cutting edge. And it's different than what I think you would see in a lot of district's strategic plans.
So you know what you do?
Yeah.
It absolutely is.
But we also have to be appropriate and methodical in the way that we create it so we're not overwhelming people and we're doing it the right way and we're making smart decisions. And it's going to take time.
The technology piece is also something, I think, that's been a little bit left off from last year. You know, we never got to see the iPad project. I feel like we've been asking for that. I don't know, Evan?
Yep.
For a million years. So that.
Sure, a little bit when we went into the school, but not much.
Yes, we still haven't seen that. I think that we need, that, you know, and I, so for me, that's kind of on my list of things that we need to make sure that the technology that we're spending this money to have is really being implemented in an effective way. That the students are using it in ways that make sense for educational.
And I think that what we should do is really invite the kids to tell you what's going on and what they're using it for, because they're, they're the best indicator of where we are with this.
Yeah.
And have another one of those days where we go into the classroom. I thought that was.
Yeah, I thought we got, certainly got some insight on how the iPads were being used in classes just by, you know, a handful of students telling us what was going on. And honestly, a lot of it wasn't that positive. So I do feel like we have to do a little, we have to figure out how to make sure it's working really well.
Yep.
So maybe technology should be more of a bullet point.
I don't know if that's in the strategic plan. Do you think that's a separate pullout?
I almost think it should be a bullet point this year. The website really needs to come full force. The, the new Chromebooks, the new, you know, the kids finishing up with the iPads, maybe that needs to be a bullet point. I mean, technology is changing faster.
Like, to me, the techno, the education within technology could, is under, like, the strategic plan and the website is under communication for me.
Well, it says it right here. It says enhance use of technology. So it is, we do name technology.
It is technically, yeah, but I'm just saying.
Maybe be specific as far as, as it applies to instructional, as it applies, you know, like when you say a bullet point, right, you mean within the goal.
You want to pull it out, like, we're saying strategic plan, communication, and buildings and grounds as, as kind of three main goals. You're suggesting we pull out a fourth main goal as like technology.
As technology.
How do you guys feel about that? Do you feel like it should be pulled out as a fourth goal? Or do you feel like the issues can be weaved into those other three goals?
No, I think it's a, it's within that. I mean, we can make it a separate bullet point, like within another bullet specifically.
Right.
You know, the implementation of Google Chromebooks and iPads in the high school. I mean, we can be more specific of the wording, but it definitely, I feel, falls within the goal. But we can clearly be more, just instead of just throwing out, you know, enhanced use of technology.
Be specific.
Be specific, like, specific use of Google Chromebooks, something like that.
Right.
And we added the facilities to that one bullet, so maybe it's just a matter of.
Yeah, being specific.
Yeah, and the other piece too is also the student management platform. I think that that needs to be included in technology. We're going to be with grades five, six, and, four, five, and six this year. We're going to be beginning to implement ECHO, which is the management software that comes from the New Tech Network. And so as we go into the implementation year in grades four, five, and six, we're also starting the planning year in three, seven, and nine. And so that, you're going to start to see a rolling understanding of ECHO and what's, and how it's going to be used and.
What is ECHO? What is it?
ECHO is the.
For the kids or the students?
It's for the students.
And what does it do?
It's a student management platform from the New Tech Network. It's a way of getting, accessing any information that's related to the work that the New Tech Network does. It has rubrics in it. It's a management system for their own work. There's a, it's, it's an enormous management system that kids can use for their benefit.
So is it Mike Powers School?
No, no. It's, it's something, it's a dashboard, which is what, you probably have heard the concept of the dashboard. It's a place to go to, to manage everything that's going on in instruction.
Can we get a link to that? Can we get a login and play with it?
Sure.
Just to see what it is?
Similar to Google Classroom then.
Yes, it is. It's very much like Google Classroom, but Google and ECHO interface.
Okay.
But it's, it has more options than Google Classroom.
Right, a lot more.
That's the way Leah was kind of describing it. She said it's Google Classroom, but better. It's got a lot of similar attributes, but more stuff.
And it's all, it's all the people, the thousands of people that are using the New Tech Network at this point. It's kind of a collective wisdom that is now put into a management system for the teachers and the students to use.
So that's. Kind of goes back to my question about continuity between going K through 12. So four, five, and six, we're using an ECHO program, but then we go to Google Classroom.
It's all interfaced. So it's one and the same. Everything that, that ECHO does is interfaced with Google. So you can use what you're using in Google Classroom, interfaces with ECHO.
But it's not a Google product.
No, it's a New Tech Network product.
So, but I understand what you're saying, but here's the problem. The technology is changing so fast, but that, that the third, fourth, and fifth graders who are using this product, by, even though you would assume if they were using Google Classroom, they'd be able to use it in seventh, eighth, and ninth, by the time those same kids get to seventh, eighth, and ninth, the product will be different again.
Yeah, it'll all be changing. But there's a conscious decision because most schools are moving to the ECHO, to the Google platform, that ECHO and Google are interfaced. So it's not an either or, it's a both.
Is it more, I'm just trying to get an understanding, is it more for the primary levels? Like, why wouldn't we introduce it K through 12 then?
Well, we will.
Oh, okay. So you're just initially.
But it's part of the rolling, it's part of the rolling initiative as, as one, three groups, three grades are leaving the planning year and going into implementation. We have three grades that are going into the planning year, and next year, they'll be going into implementation, and then more grades will be coming behind.
And I think that's another thing that we have to keep in mind. It gets very frustrating for children, especially at the high school level, when they're, they're being introduced to all these new platforms, when they've had, they've worked with different platforms, they're being introduced to new platforms, and then they're going to be introduced to completely different platforms. So what I'm trying to say is maybe we should take a little caution on, and this can fall under our goals, into really concentrating on what's going to work best.
By the time, we will have a continuum, a K-12 continuum of student management as we go through this process. Although I, it's, it's not something I anticipate that we'll use K-2 for the obvious reasons. But as they get into third grade, it, there is a movement that, and it's also being rolled out in a way that a student goes from year to year to year using the same thing. So anybody who's in four, five, and six is going to now move into another grade that has it because seventh grade phase is in this year.
It's also about getting the teachers trained on all these.
That's right.
I mean, that might be the biggest hurdle, is getting the teachers to be trained on all this material, the staff to get trained on all of it, for everyone to feel comfortable with it. That's probably a bigger hurdle even than getting the kids acclimated.
So there is a methodical plan. So your worries are included within the planning process. And we're, we're, we're not going to have anybody that's, that's trained that all of a sudden falls into something that's not happening.
I think one of the complications is that I think it's, it's, it's really hard for people who haven't been exposed to these tools to really understand what they consist of and how they can be used and what does it even mean that they're, that they're integrated with each other? I mean, this is something that I think about all the ti, I mean, you know, I mean, this is something I do think about a lot. But I mean, so I, I was just looking again at this, at the, at what I could find online about ECHO and I wonder if, you know, some sort of, I mean, Margaret asked for like logins. I don't know if they even have logins or if they have.
Yes, they do.
Like, you know, video demos or, you know, something to help, I think, help us, help us understand exactly what they, you know, what they are. I mean, because, I mean, this issue of technology is something that the board has, you know, wanted to have more information about over time. And, you know, the board asked, you know, we, before I was on it, before we were on the iPad initiative, and now the iPad initiative, while we're keeping the iPads in the schools, we're also switching to Chromebooks. And so I, I mean, I, I guess I actually am sort of, you know, also feeling the need to know more and, and learn more and understand, and understand more because the, because the changes are being made. And I know we already have our list of workshops, but, you know, maybe.
Well, it is the December 20th workshop.
Yeah, so I guess that, so that's it. So that's been, that addresses my question of make sure that we know more.
We have technology, technology, website, Chromebooks, iPads, how are they utilized in the classroom? And then we should probably add ECHO to that.
Is there anything comparable in any other grade level? Or that's just the one?
It's going to be, that's going to be the one for the entire district as we phase in.
You know, and I hear, I can't remember if it was Margaret or Laura who said, well, the technology changes so quickly and what if kids, you know, start using this, but then something changes? I mean, my pers, you know, my response to that is, it's, either we opt out completely, you know, we don't do any of it, or we just acknowledge that there are going to be these, these kinds of changes. I don't know.
Yeah, and the reason why we're moving to Chromebooks is because it is just a web-based device. And so the changes can happen on the webs, on the web, and they can also happen on the platform, and we can still use the same device. And so it will grow without needing a different system or a new device to come and, and update, which iPads change much more thoroughly as compared to the Chromebooks, because it is just the web.
But then there's limitations to the Chromebooks, so we could, you know, have this argument that, that
Yep.
They're able to do more with iPad in terms of iMovies and music.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there has to be both.
Right, right.
But, and we understand that, and, you know, that's something, but it's not necessarily the only thing we have to have at this point.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so I think we have some broad strokes for our goals. So what I'll do is I'll write up a draft of what I think we've all said, and I'll give it to you via email and you can.
Yeah.
And then.
We could talk about it at the retreat too.
We can talk about it at the retreat. I'm hopeful, you know, that we could have it approved by our next business meeting. I think that would be a good goal. Okay, good. And then the board workshop topics for 2016, 17, these are things we've talked about. So I think they're just here for us to review in case anybody has anything else they need to add or, or take away. Does it look good to everybody? Buildings and grounds needs are next time around. Building condition survey, November, we're doing the APPR, provided we have
Within.
An APPR.
Within the APPR, can you, I mean, because I see NWEA is in January, but since you're saying that, can you somehow, like, because you're saying the NWA is going to be tied to the APPR, so.
For the 3012D component. But there's, the other APPR is the 3012C.
Okay.
And so it, it's in the portal. We've had state, the state ed has come back and said, these are the things you need to change within the portal. So we're at, we're almost at the end. So once the state approves it, then we have our 3012D in addition to our 3012C.
Do you think by November 15th it'll be approved?
I would imagine so, yeah. I mean, we're getting very close.
Right.
And we have to have it by, it has to be approved by December or else they could potentially take state aid. I mean, so we've been in the portal since the beginning of September.
December is our technology. January is our testing. February is our Garrison Board of Education. December's our technology, January's our testing, February is our Garrison Board of Education joint meeting. March is budget, April is capstone, which is, um, internships, high school internships.
Or exit.
Or exit process.
Graduation.
Graduation stuff. Uh, May is our vote, our annual, annual meeting, and June is our tenured faculty and retiring staff. We're already totally scheduled for the whole year. Uh, you know, and sometimes budget needs more workshop time. That's something that we, you know, stay flexible with. But it's looking good to me. Does anyone have anything they need to add or question, or? Everybody good? Um, so the Westchester Putnam School Boards Association, um, Julia, you know, you can help me out with this. Basically, they're asking if anyone on our board would like to serve as a liaison to, um, the Westchester Putnam School Boards Association, or I think these are two separate things, the legislative, serve on the Legislative Advocacy Committee. Does anyone have an interest in either of those two items? I, I believe they are, um, you know, they're additional work. They're attending other, additional meetings. Um, I, I believe in the past, um, the superintendent has chosen to just be the liaison for the Westchester Putnam School Boards Association. Isn't that what you did last year?
Yeah, for the most part, but they
I mean
But those meetings are all during the day, no?
No, at evening.
They're all in the evening?
Yeah, well, they're probably both. There's, they're different events, but, um, I will be happy to continue to send the information to you that comes from it and serve as the liaison. Um, you know, we, like, once a year, we go to a meeting. Generally, there's advocacy. If, if you have an interest in that, there are usually advocacy events.
They actually brought this up at the conference, and it was, it was a great seminar, because it was locally based board members, so it wasn't up in Albany. It was in Yorktown, run by, um, Westchester Putnam School Board Association. And it was great to
I lost mine, too.
Hear
The internet went down, so we lost things.
Yeah, we lost everything.
Oh, I was wondering what happened.
Yeah, we went down.
I'm sorry, Deme.
No, that's okay. So it was a great opportunity to hear and listen, um, about local school districts and from different perspectives of different board members. The issue is time, and that's what we all have a problem.
Can I ask you, Diana, while you're sitting there, do you guys, does Garrison have somebody that serves?
Yeah, the, um, the, one of them, it's basically, they send you stuff.
Yeah, the liaison?
Yeah, uh, not the liaison, the other one, I think.
The advocacy committee?
Yeah, I think they just, one of them, they just send stuff. You know, they get an email and
Send it on?
Which they've gotten, get it. And the other one, I think we pick two people.
And you go to a meetings, or you just, you don't, you're not sure?
I think in the past, yeah. Some of the breakfast and stuff are very good, and, uh, you know, some of the things are good.
Yeah.
I mean, it's worth it, like you say, to get out there and see other places and talk to other board members.
Yeah, I feel like the way we've
And so the convention is coming up, too, I'm sure.
Yeah, but that's in God's country. No offense, Buffalo.
There was a school there, I think, that was a bit
That's where it is.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'd go to Buffalo.
Really?
I'd go to Buffalo, yeah.
You can go, it's in October.
Well, and that's the other thing. They run all these different seminars where you don't necessarily have to be the liaison.
No, of course, that's what I'm saying. I feel like the way we've operated in the past is that anybody who has an interest in going to any of these seminars just goes. They tell Julia, or they sign themselves up, and they say, I wanna go, and then you go. So I feel like I'm comfortable, if Diana, you're comfortable with it, continuing with you as the liaison. I don't feel like anyone is raising their hand too, too strongly here.
The time, that's the problem.
Yeah, it's the time, okay.
To say yes, and then not go.
Right.
Okay, clear?
Okay.
All right.
And just another thing to note is that we're a five-member board. Most school districts are a seven-member board, and they're spread out a little bit.
Yeah, they have more
Which I learned, uh, this, so it was, it seemed like they were spread out a little bit better.
Summer nine.
Summer nine.
Summer nine, right.
Okay, uh, any communication from the public? I'd like to make a motion for us to go into executive session. To, let me get this right, for the purpose of discussing the proposed acquisition, sale, or lease of real estate property, no actions planned during this executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Uh, we won't be coming back to this location. Thank you.